Hello, Mayor, how are you, sir?
Yeah, that's a pretty big time, though.
Yeah, it's eight hundred bucks, right there in the stuff. I guess, man. That's all?
The Chair will call the September 7th, 2021 Meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio. Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, quorum is present.
Thank you. We do have a brief presentation from Michael Higgins, if he's here, and Susan Helm, with regards to a presentation of some awards. I don't know if they're here. Oh, there they are, front row. We appreciate all your work you've done. Michael, I know you've been very active in the downtown and environmental improvements, things of that nature, so we appreciate you coming today. You can spin it around if you want. Either way.
Which way? Do you want to talk this way? Can I take this off?
Sure.
All right. I'm Susan Helm, and you all know Chef Higgins.
She'll turn it around for you.
Oh, okay. So I'm a community volunteer who has been involved with Pollinator Habitat, creating it in Springfield over the last 10 years, including the Dana Thomas House, Mauldner's Rooftop, six parks, and some of the downtown planters and bumpouts. Chef Higgins has been a big supporter of the cause and my efforts. We're here tonight to thank you, Mayor Langfelder, and some of the people from Public Works, going back to Mark Mahoney, Nate Bottoms, Jeff Ream, Pat Buckley, for their support of pollinators in Springfield. We would like to present the city with two official certificates, one from the University of Illinois Extension and the other from the Monarch Watch, to declare your downtown planters and bumpouts meet the criteria for these certifications, supporting our pollinators being environmentally friendly, sustainable, and quite frankly, a great marketing tool for Springfield. We're also going to pass along an official sign recognizing Springfield's many pollinator gardens which sit on or near historic Route 66 and Monarch, then the Monarch Flyway, and this is a new initiative of several state agencies and Route 66. In fact, I met Mayor Langfelder the other day at that ribbon cutting at the Illinois State Fair.
Susan and I met in 2017 when she came to me and told me what I was going to do with my rooftop garden that had been there for about seven years, previous. Mauldner's, along with Jenny Lee, who has done her own garden, were early examples of what urban gardening can do and a direction that it could go in. Jenny Lee has a garden that is behind Lincoln Library, and mine is on the roof. Because of Susan and the people working with her, our city owns these distinguished awards and honors. It just is one more arrow in the quiver of Springfield, not only to advertise itself and set it apart from other communities, but a marketing tool for our tourism. Thank you, Mayor Langfelder, Public Works, the volunteers, in helping Springfield move in this direction, and hopefully we can move further along as Springfield moves into, downtown moves in a new direction with new planters and new tree plantings and things like that. So, at this time...
I'm not going to read both of these, but I'll read one of them. This is a certificate of appreciation for creating and maintaining a pollinator pocket. This one's called A. Lincoln's Emancipation Monarch Gardens on Route 66. The University of Illinois Extension awards this certificate to the City of Springfield, Illinois, Route 66 Monarch Flyaway Gardens. And there's even a little sign that goes with it. And I also have one for, and then Michael has this one.
And a big sign that goes with it.
A big sign that goes with it.
So you can put this wherever you want to put it.
So thank you very much.
Thank you both very much for all you do, especially for downtown, Michael. We appreciate it. At this time, the Chair will ask to take out an order, ordinance number 2021-366.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item 2021-366, an ordinance appointing Lakeisha Purchase to the Office of Aldermen for Ward Five for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2021-366 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. In discussion, I'd like to have Lakeisha come forward. I asked her to make an introductory comment and then open it up to City Council if they have any questions.
Happy Tuesday. So my name is Lakeisha Purchase, and I am currently the Capitol Township Trustee, but crossing my fingers that I will be the Ward Five Alderwoman, sitting up here on the horseshoe with you all tonight. A little bit about myself, I've been here for over a decade. This is the 11th year now. I have been very active in the community from the time I got here from Carbondale. I came from SIU Carbondale with a major in political science and a minor in speech communication. And when I got here, I wanted to do public service and do what my degree was. And so I got active on the east side of Springfield with Alderman Williams and Alderman Gregory and One in a Million, and hit the ground running. And when I became Capitol Township Trustee, my goal was to tell people what Capitol Township does. When I would knock on the doors, they would say, "What are you talking about?" They didn't know what Capitol Township was. So I wanted to educate, and that's basically what I've done. The last big project that I did was fighting for the Tiff Extension for Enos Park Downtown and for the Madison Park Place. And it was kind of silent like this while I was fighting, so I was like a loner up there. But I'm thinking that up here, I won't be a loner. I'll have some teammates and rooting for me. And Ward Five is the economic engine for the city of Springfield. Not only is it centralized, but we have two hospitals, the School of Medicine. A lot of the state working buildings lies within Ward Five, all of the older neighborhoods, and some of those issues that I see is why I'm wanting to champion them. I ran in 2019. I came in second place with 31% of the vote, and that was one of the reasons why I stepped forward and wanted the mayor to appoint me. And I'm happy to be standing up here, and if any of you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. As you can tell, the ordinance passed nine voting yes, none voting no. So we'll do the swearing in. So if you'd like to, we'd ask Judge Rudy Bro to come forward. We appreciate you coming on short notice.
I would like to say thank you to each and every one of you for trusting that I will get up here and do my job, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
And we'll do it right up here.
I, Lakeisha K. Purchase.
I, Lakeisha K. Purchase.
Do you follow me square? I will support.
I do follow me square. I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderwoman.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderwoman.
For the city of Springfield, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
For the city of Springfield, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
My pleasure.
My pleasure. And we have one quick photo with Delcy sitting there. Those beautiful ladies are red.
You remember all this?
Yes, I do.
And you remember all this?
Yeah.
All right, here we go. One more.
I'm on the work. Y'all get ready, she gonna have flowers all over downtown. We're gonna have to treat this downtown in Illinois. I said, "Oh, hell."
I hope so.
She was, "That's the right one." There you go. There you go. Come on, Purchase, let's go.
Congratulations on doing the thing, Jeanette.
Oh, hi, Ms. Jeanette. How are you?
You got, yeah.
Ms. Jeanette.
That's just for me to, I'm gonna not rise it.
Okay.
Okay, and then do you give me something? I'll have this on.
Now I get to walk up?
Yeah, get it.
It's just been spring.
Okay.
Lakeisha, just vote the way I do. You'll be fine.
The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the August 17th, 2021 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved, Mayor.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this City Council.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
No, it's not.
Roll call. Okay.
My first vote.
And the consent agenda passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2021-239, 2021-254, 2021-255, 2021-336, 2021-337, and 2021-353 remain tabled during committee. Next item on the agenda is document number 2021-342, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Leland Grove for overlaying Chatham Road for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2021-342 on final passage.
Mayor, actually, I'd like to make a motion for discussion first.
Second.
Been moved in second for discussion.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, I'm Mayor. I believe we have Leland Grove's mayor in the audience. Could, Mayor, could we ask her to come up just for a minute, please? Some questions. Hello, Mayor.
If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Mary, Mary Jo Bangert, and I live at 2024 Lindsay Road, Leland Grove, Illinois.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for coming in. And I apologize, I sent you an email today that I'm not sure that you even had time to get to yet.
I did receive it and called you back.
Okay, well, if I was at work, my phone was off. Or I was on another call. So essentially, the gist of what I sent, and I've talked to a couple other council members, not everyone, I did get a little bit of pushback on this, this issue. Really, everyone is very much in favor of the city of Springfield supporting Chatham, supporting Leland Grove, getting Chatham Road fixed, and taking care of that issue. But one of the conversations, a couple of conversations, actually, now that I've had, kind of center on the concept of Springfield's being the good neighbor here and doing what we absolutely should be doing, and accommodating our neighbors for the good of our overall community. So people asked, could Leland Grove reciprocate? The concern mostly from my ward is that sign on Greenbrier that says you can't come through here. We'd like that down. It doesn't feel neighborly. The person I talked to has a child who lives, they live in my ward, and a friend who lives east of them on Greenbrier. And they have to do a big circle to get to that friend's house. And they asked if it could come down. It doesn't feel neighborly to them. It doesn't feel accommodating to them. And so I said I would ask. And the other one is just the big speed bump in the room. We get requests all the time for speed bumps in the city of Springfield, and we get a consistent, I'll put it politely, just no. Part of that concern comes, Public Works, I know, doesn't like them. I know Nate's not here right now, but I think I can speak for him comfortably on that one. And part of the concern is for our fire department, because it's more wear and tear on our fire trucks, for them to go over those if they go too quickly, or to come to a complete stop, basically, because those trucks are so big. So the other request was, can you take your speed bumps out?
Okay, let me address these issues. These both happened prior to me being on council or being mayor. My understanding, when the speed bumps were put in, the council at that time and the mayor at that time consulted fire, ambulance, police, and utilities, and there was no problem. So when those were put in, it was okay to do that. So that's the reason they were put that in, to slow traffic down on the streets that we have, especially on Laurel, where we have them, because if you think about Laurel, Laurel starts way out on Dirksen partly and comes all the way through, and people do pick up speed. We're a residential city, and so that is the reason those were put in, but they were consulted. Fox Meadows, I did some research on this one in the short time that I had, and the residents addressed this issue. Dorothy Sager started the subdivision back in 1950, and at that time, she built the roads to be a residential area. The roads have not been expanded. They're only 19 feet wide, which does not even allow for two cars sometimes to be going through. We have no sidewalks. So when Fox Meadows, the new part of Fox Meadows in Greenbrier opened, and there was going to be a lot of traffic going through in 2004, there was a study done, and at that time, there were 300 cars on Greenbrier and 250 cars on Huntley. And at that time, no one even knew about that kind of shortcut through there. I have to tell you, my son lives on Worson Road. I have to go all the way around to get to his house. I understand what you're saying. But they did another study, and that other study, there was 1,000 cars that were going up and down that road. Those roads were designed by Dorothy Sager not to carry traffic at the volume that is being carried. And the width of it is not the width that we can allow that much traffic and people walking without sidewalks. So at that time, the residents of Fox Meadows petitioned and asked that the road be closed to through traffic, and that is what has happened, that it's closed to through traffic. It is an ordinance, and so that all would have to go before City Council and everything else. And I'm afraid, at this time, our roads are not going to handle it, and so we would have to redo roads. So at this time, I can't, both of these are ordinances, and as you know, as the mayor knows, without your city council, you can't change an ordinance. But thank you for your concern, and what I can do is take it back to City Council.
I would appreciate that. And I hope you can understand, I mean, I'm speaking from a ward that, if you look at North Cokie Mill, it's not a very wide road, is not designed to have the flow of traffic that it has. Obviously, anyone who's followed City Council knows that one of the biggest complaints we bring up on this, around this horseshoe, is consistently speeding. It's not something that's foreign to the rest of us. So I will say, I do have concerns about, especially the Greenbrier issue. I have a lot of residents who live on smaller roads, and they would like a little ease of access in getting through Leland Grove. You have your own police department who can, and do, pull over people for speeding, and we appreciate, I'll be honest, I appreciate that. I tell, don't complain to me about your speeding tickets, because that's not something I'm going to be very sympathetic about. But I am sympathetic to people feeling as if Leland Grove is putting up barriers to allowing access to other, to through roads.
And they aren't barriers as far as to keep people out. It's a barrier because originally, when it was started in 2004, because our roads could not handle it, and we financially didn't have the money to go and replace all the roads. So that's the reason it came about back in 2004. So that's how, I can't answer anything else, other than I'll...
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. And I can appreciate the, you know, they talking to the chief on the speed bumps, but I've talked to, when I first got on, I asked the chiefs about it, and they hate them. It does cause problems with our fire trucks if they, if they're going and they do not. And to the point where I've said a couple times to our Corporation Council that when we do renegotiate the fire district amount that we put in there, that those speed bumps have to come out. It does affect our trucks. And I know Laurel, one of the speed bumps is between two stop signs. So, you know, I mean, I think what happened on that was some aldermen over there, or maybe the previous mayor, I don't know, put them somewhere close to where they live or something, I don't know. But I just know that it does cause a problem with our, you know, that they don't like them. And the fire chief just walked in, and he can, I'm sure he's willing to speak about that, but we, you know, when we got a big rig like that and it hits those speed bumps and it's full of water, that's a lot of weight, and so it is a concern.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, welcome to the City Council chamber.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here this evening. You know, one of the things that has been talked about for a number of years is, from my constituents when I'm walking neighborhoods, is the condition of Chatham Road. And the last thing that a constituent of mine wants to hear is, "Well, you know, part of that's not in the city of Springfield and part is," and because all they're hearing, quite frankly, is blah, 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 blah. Because they don't care who's, what jurisdiction it's in. They just want it to be drivable, want it to be a smooth ride, and want it to be, of course, accessible. And Alderwoman Conley, I appreciate you bringing up those concerns about some of the issues. I hear those, I hear those gripes from my constituents as well. But regarding the ordinance at hand, this is something that needs to happen, and I appreciate everybody involved that is trying to make this able to get done in a cooperative fashion. It's so important. And quite frankly, the, any engineer in the room and on the, and on the phone and out there in the audience will tell you that costs are only going to go up. That's just, so we need to get it done as soon as possible. But I really would appreciate your consideration and the council's consideration on the items brought forward by Alderwoman Conley.
I will take them back to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
Yes. Thank you for coming, Mayor.
You're welcome.
You know, this was a hard one, because we're giving money to another municipality and to fix their roads, but it's a loan, is what I had to explain to people. It's a loan. loan. You have a loan coming. And I guess we've done this before, and this is part of this good neighbor relationship. But, you know, as I sit here, you know, my constituents tell me about our side of town, where 11th Street, South Grand, North Grand, you know, we have the same thing. I appreciate that the aldermen over there say, hey, this road over there, that we're going to fix, it's so long, it goes through, what, three wards, maybe? And then through your village? I know that everybody in Springfield uses the road. So I'm, I'm going to support it tonight. But, but I got to be honest with you. I probably won't support anything else dealing with, supporting another municipality that only has 1,400 to 1,500 residents, and doesn't want to annex into the city. Because that's a big part of our problem, is the donut in a hose in Springfield, Illinois. A lot of them are, are getting to the point where they can't maintain themselves, so they're starting to lean on the bigger city, instead of doing the smart thing, and just come on into the city. You yourself said in the last session we had, that you do all your shopping in Springfield. You have no commercial buildings. It's just nothing but residents. So to me, that's just a neighborhood, or neighborhood association, whatever you want to call it. And I think that you should take that back to your, your city council, and ask them, when are they going to consider? Because as the alderman said, things ain't getting cheaper. And, you know, I, I know you're not Grandview, I know you're not, but, but people are struggling to, you know, to stay independent. And we need to start thinking smarter. And, and, and I'm kind of really touchy about this, because when I first got on, I had some people come, and they said, leave us alone, we don't want to be in there. And I'm making sure we leave them alone, and they get nothing. I'm trying to go along with this, only because we've been good neighbors, this is what we do. I don't think it's the smartest thing to do. We should all, we, we are not taking care of Springfield enough to be doing this. But what sold me, I just want you to know, was the pending grant that's coming in from the state that you're going to use, and the 2%, you know, until that is done. I just would, as Alderman Donlin said, the sooner the better.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your thoughts.
Alderman Redpath and Alderman Gregory?
Yes, Mayor, welcome back to the city. It's a fun place up here. But, you know, last week, I was opposed to this, because frankly, I don't think we need to be in the banking business for the city of Springfield. It's hard for us to be able to go back to our constituents and say, I can't fix the roads at the lake, because we're lending money to Leland Grove. And I stick to that. It's, it's tough for us to do that. This is a community problem, though, and I, I think that I can support it. With what I've seen here with the amendment that's being brought by the mayor, that we're going to change a few things in that. And, you know, the interest on that, on that note, if we, if you paid it back at 250 a year, a year, is going to be $16,000 in the first year, just the interest alone. So we need to, hopefully, we can come up with a compromise, and I will support it for that. I won't support it for eight years. I, I can tell you that. If we got a shorter term loan, and, and something that we're sure we're going to get back. You said that you do have grants, and, and they're, they're possibly coming your way. That will soften the blow a little bit. But understand, this is a, and you've heard, there's a lot of different ideas going floating around here tonight, that's gonna, that could impact this, this ordinance. But I will support it, as long as we can come up with a compromise about the, about the funds. Because this is a tough, tough vote.
I understand.
I got people in this room that live in my ward, who are listening to this, and they know I fight for the roads for them every day. We got tough roads out there, the lake. So.
And I appreciate everything you're saying. I do. I understand. Back in 1950, when Leland Grove was incorporated by the residents, it was over roads, because no one would fix their roads. And that's why they incorporated into a city. So I understand what you're saying. I also want to say, the state of Illinois, when we wrote the grants, was very impressed that two governments would work together on a road that went through both cities. And that was one of the things that they said to us, that they were so glad there was an intergovernmental agreement, and that we were all working together for the betterment of both communities.
Just as a follow-up, I'd need to ask corporation councils, as a meaning of the intergovernmental agreement, the contractual side of this, are we requiring any kind of collateral, for some reason, that they can't fulfill their obligation on the note?
There is no, there's no mortgage or collateral in respect to like, like a bank might do, or something of that nature.
But what happens if there's a default?
It would be just a pledge. It would be a contract matter between cities. So it would be a breach of contract-type action, like any other. And a city, you know, has the ability to raise funds if there's a judgment. They can't, you know, file bankruptcy, things of that nature. So the entity itself would continue, therefore, it would be collectible.
Okay. So we will be able to recover if we got into a situation that was to fall on the note?
It would be a breach of contract. Think of that intergovernmental agreement as a contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm looking at the amendment here that we have in front of us, and I'm, I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about it, as far as how, how it affects differently from last week.
Mrs. Zarco?
Big difference.
The, just briefly, there is, there is an amendment. There, the intent was to change the amount of the potential loan or reimbursement funds from 1.4 million to 800,000. And there is a typo on here, so a zero was left off. So it's 800,000. And that, it is my understanding, however, Mayor, you could correct, or Mayor Langfelter, that that was perhaps the original agreement from a couple of years ago, was 800,000?
Back in 2019, that was the original agreement. And when you and the mayor called me at 3:00 this afternoon to tell me what you had decided to do, I told you that was going to be a problem for us, because city council, my city council, had agreed to the 1.4. And that was going to put us, because now we're going to, that, we could even lose a grant. Because with the grants, we said we were borrowing from the city of Springfield, 1.4. Since that would change, we've, we will have to go back, and we could lose our grants. But I have not had time, I will tell you, receiving the call at 3:00 this afternoon, I have not had time to get ahold of the state. I have not had time to get ahold of Leland Grove council members, or our treasurer, to see what that would do to us. So it will, just a gut feeling, it's going to put us in a bind.
Yeah, what was the, you said that the state, the original agreement, so this would supplant that. So really, the amount of the original agreement, wasn't it $1 million? The original agreement to the state of Illinois?
We wrote for $1 million for the state of Illinois. Yes, we wrote for $1 million.
So are we thinking, with, with, a follow-up, I apologize. So did we take this 1.4 down to 800,000 with, with the assumption that the $1 million is going to, going to come within, what'd you say the timeframe was last week? That you was thinking you would get the $1 million grant? Timeframe for your grant from the state?
Well, I, I, I'm hoping that we can get you paid, as soon as we, as soon as we, it's a reimbursement grant. So as soon as we get bills, we can, from you, I mean, from the contractor, we, we get money from you, we pay the bills, then we go to the state and we get reimbursement. And that, and as soon as we can do it, we're going to do it. I mean, we, we are grateful. We do not want the money to sit out there very long. We want to pay you back as soon as we can pay you back.
So let me, let me just ask this question. So you say the council approved for the 1.4 million before you ever came here and talked to us?
Yes. Yes, I did. They did.
Thank you.
Alderman McMenamah?
Yeah, all the comments are really worthwhile tonight. And there's no alderman that wants Chatham Road improved more than I do. I've been hearing the complaints for 10 years. But we've got to do it in a responsible manner. And many constituents do not want the city of Springfield to be a bank, nor do we want to enable a, excuse me, but a relative history to remain in being when it really can't perform the necessary and essential services that everyone deserves. I, I think, Mayor, I appreciate your efforts to, to improve the agreement with Leland Grove. And I'd like you and the corporation council to, to go over those amendments to the agreement, not the ordinance, but the agreement that the ordinance brings into being. I also want to point out, this is a good occasion to talk about, to talk about the citizens of Leland Grove. I went back and looked at the tax records and their combined tax rate. Few people realize that actually, the citizens of Leland Grove pay 7% combined tax rate, higher than the citizens of Springfield. So that if, I think the citizens of Leland Grove got to think about the advantages of annexing to the city of Springfield eventually. But what we got on the table right now is this Chatham Road improvement. I think, Mayor, could you go over the agreements that, or the amendments to the agreements that you've talked about with corporation council to incorporate?
Yeah. We'll do that after we have other comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Alderman Donlin.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly ask, Mayor, we saw that you got, the bids came in for this project, and the low bid was 1.4 million. Is that correct?
Yes.
So $800,000 doesn't fix Chatham Road?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But the grant does.
That was my question.
Okay.
That's, that's 2.4 in combination.
Alderman Conley, I didn't hear your comments.
My, my question was, the, the low bid for this project came in at 1.4 million. So $800,000 doesn't, doesn't meet the full cost of fixing Chatham Road. I understand a reimbursement process for grants. You can only get reimbursed for what you spend, and then we might not have. Again, I, I had questions for you, and I appreciate your patience in listening to us all, and, and, you know, having this conversation. I, I want to be very clear that I, I am in favor of, of getting Chatham Road fixed, and getting the job finished, and not doing 2/3 of the job. So.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah. First of all, I've got no, no comments from people in my ward about not loaning the money. Not heard anything. I've had a lot of comments about getting it done, complete. I mean, quite frankly, if, if we're not going to give them the money they need, then we might as well start the project at Old Jacksonville Road and go north. Because we're just going to have a big mine pit that's right in the middle. And even though it's Leland Grove, the people are going to blame us, the city. That's who, they, they don't care. It's just like in any other street that, that goes through, through the township or something. They don't care that it's going through a township. They just want it fixed. And I'm not supporting the amendment. I think it, do the, do the amount that, that was asked. The road gets done, and, you know, we move forward. Because it will not do us any good to do our part of the road and have a big chunk. So we might as well save our cost. We could put money over in the, on the lake roads.
Absolutely.
And not do the, not, and just go from Old Jacksonville north. But this is just ridiculous. It's, you know, they, they asked for 1.4, we cut it to where, we know what the cost of the, of the, of the project's going to be. We don't even give them enough, they have some reserve. We didn't even give them enough to, to cover that.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I think we're losing sight of the, of the, sight of the math here. Leland Grove is saying they're going to get $1 million from the state of Illinois if we have an intergovernmental agreement. And then we're going to give them another 800,000. That's 1.8 million to do a 1.4 million dollar job. So I don't understand the math here.
No, that's not.
The spend up to amount.
We could spend up to 1.4, and 100, 1.4.
You can, 800,000 from us, and 1 million from the state grant?
No, no, no.
What's, what's incorrect about that?
The 800, we are borrowing from you. And as we, as we pay our bills with this money, we will reimburse you with this money. We don't get this money upfront. We have to, it's a reimbursement. So we're using your money to pay our bills. We're taking this money to give it right back to you.
Mayor, that, I don't trust what you're saying. I don't think you've got a good understanding of the way the contractors work. I think that.
Having been a business owner, I think I do.
Well, I've been at that, too. So, and I, I've studied the minutes.
Mayor, you don't trust them? Come on. You.
It's the truth. I'm just going to flat-out tell it.
Have some class.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. If, if I can maybe explain, and this is because this is actually.
It's your job.
It's one of the things that I do at my job. When someone gets a grant from the state, they get an award notice, and they go through, they do the work, and submit for reimbursement to the state. That's why, you know, very proud of our comptroller, Susanna Mendoza, who's gotten bills, who's gotten these reimbursement payments out in such a fast, fast fashion. But if we only loan 800,000, they can only get reimbursed for 800,000. So we have a job that is 2/3 done.
That's not correct.
Yes, it is. That's exactly correct, Joe.
Or they could take the 800,000 that they're getting reimbursed, and take the reimbursement money to add up to the 1.4 million.
Exactly.
But if they, they have to pay us.
No, they'll still owe us the 800,000, but take the reimbursement money and finish the project.
That's not the way it goes. Doesn't go that way.
That's the way it could go.
Let me, let me help everybody out here. Where'd the 800,000 dollars come from? It came from the original agreement. So if we could turn back the clock, we wouldn't even have this discussion, because the work would have been done.
Exactly.
And the intent of the administration at that time, Springfield administration, was to do all of Chatham Road. So what happened, before Mayor Bangert come into office, they pulled back that agreement. So Chatham Road decided not to do it. Pandemic hits, and everything goes south. So the 800,000, where that came from, is the 800,000 we originally pledged. And the reason for that, we listened to the council members. That was a concern. The concern was putting out 1.4 million. I know, Alderman Hanauer, you might not, you know, need it. You might not have heard from your constituents, because Archer Elevator's done, Lenhart's done, Bunker Hill's done, because we made that commitment. And we were doing the same for all the wards. We're trying to do that. But when you have constituents telling other council members, it's a different situation. So the 800,000, plus the 200,000, I think you were up here last week, saying you had 200,000 that could be expended. 200,000 plus 800,000 equals 1 million. So you can go forward with the project. If you get the grant fund, that supplants the remaining amount, and then you paid the remaining loan to the city of Springfield. Pretty simple. Now with that, I've called Josh Broughton with Broughton's, they're doing ours. And I'm not sure if they're a little bitter or not, but if they were, they said that the most they could do in the fall, right now, is the concrete work. Concrete work costs $400,000.
Thank you.
So if we're able to do that, the 800,000 more than covers that, hopefully, hopefully the state of Illinois can make a decision by the spring of next year. And in actuality, what they should do, if they don't want to do the full million, they do the remaining amount, which would be $600,000. So that'd be up to them to make that determination. But the other concern that all the council members expressed was that the city commits to 1.4 million, and then the state not deliver on a commitment for a grant. Because I don't think there's been any firm commitment with regards to the grant. There hasn't been a award letter yet, correct?
We have not received an official award letter. What we have received is what I sent to you the other day, stating that we have been approved through the budget and through the, through, throughout the budget part of it, and the approval part of it. You know, I, I understand, I understand everything, what everyone is saying. I just, I will have to go back to my council, and, and I don't know if we can, if we can't get the agreement for the 1.4, I just don't know if we can even do it.
Mayor, I was strongly suggested to take the 800,000, take that back to them, and stop there.
Well, I will take everything back to them.
I mean, seriously. You could always come back for more later if it's, if you run into trouble.
The thing is, when we asked for 800,000, that was from a previous mayor and alderman. And at that point in time, that's what the bid was. At that point in time. As I've said to you last time, we were willing to go through it. But when you could, when you have a senator and a representative come to you and say, I would like to help you, I've got some money that I can help you with, if you'll write these grants, so that you can get this work done, how can you say no to that? And so that is kind of why we put things on hold. And as far as we knew, you weren't even going to start yours until next year. Last I had been told, yours project was going to not start till next year. And then it did start this year, which is fine. I don't have a problem with that.
You just heard the mayor say that they're only doing the concrete work this year.
No, that's, that would be for Leland Grove. We've started ours.
They started, they started your part.
About three weeks ago. Alderman Donlin and Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just for a point of clarification, and I hate negotiating things like this on the floor here, but I will ask this question. What is to stop us from making the agreement contingent upon the awarding of the grant?
That's fine.
In other words, you get your letter, and then that way we pass the ordinance, we've made the commitment, but it's contingent upon the grant being approved, and then we know how much is coming from the state.
Exactly.
And everybody can move on, we can get the work moving along.
All right. That's fine.
The one reason for that was so they could start some of the work right now.
That's fine.
That's that concrete work. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah. Mayor, you, you know, I don't know if you've looked at the map, but we do have, Ward 10's a pretty long ward. I do have three really large precincts in Westchester and Lincolnshire that use that road all the time. So to say that just because Archer Elevator got done after 25 friggin' years, and Lenhart's getting, getting some work done, which is desperately needed, and to say that the rest of the ward, it should be fine, that, that's absolutely crazy. Because I've got, I've got two huge neighborhoods that use Chatham Road on a daily basis, on a daily basis. And to just throw them, totally casually blow them off, I, I think is irresponsible.
Yeah, I don't know why you brought that up, because you're the one that said you hadn't heard from anybody. But the actual, the actuality of it is, I asked Nate Bottom with our ARP funds to look at Chatham Road by Lincolnshire and that whole area. Because that's, as you know, you brought to my attention, you all, we all know about the flooding and all of that. So that's one of the areas. But that's the only reason I said it, even though you might not have heard from your constituents. I'm sure others have.
He has.
And so that's, that's what brought us to this point. And so what we're trying to do is get the project done. I think we could take a show of hands, I'm sure everyone's hand would go up that they want that section of Chatham Road done. So the question is, how do we do it in a responsible manner? And so that's why we came up with that process. But if, you know, if we want to make it contention on the grant, we can do that. But I think that, you know, that's up to the council with regards to that. And then the work wouldn't start more than likely until the grant starts, which would probably be the spring, would be my guess.
I can't answer that.
Yeah.
I can't answer that.
As opposed to being done by July, if we move forward now with concrete work, moving forward with that aspect of 400,000, then you have the shot of getting it done by July. Otherwise, it won't get done to who knows when, and we don't want to, we want it done sooner rather than later.
I like the idea of moving forward.
Yeah.
How does it get done if we don't give them enough money to get the job done?
We're gonna, we're gonna allocate up to 1.4 million, but we're not going to distribute it in the big-
Right, but that's already in this, sorry.
Well, if you want to make an amendment, we could do the 800,000 upfront loan and then do the rest contingent on the grant.
Yes.
Remaining amount.
Just, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Alderman Conley.
So, Mayor, your grant application included a certain, at least million dollar amount guaranteed that the city would be loaning you. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
When we wrote the grant?
Yes.
Yes.
So us cutting that by 200,000 is a change to the conditions of which, of your grant?
Exactly.
I really think we're putting, I mean, I understand the frustration. I have other roads, trust me. If I could take a couple million dollars and put it into Cokey Mill, that northern stretch of Cokey Mill.
I've heard of that.
I would love to do that tomorrow. But I get so many complaints about Chatham Road. It is a huge thoroughfare for this city, and we need to make sure that it gets done and it gets finished. And I think, and also, of course, obviously, we've made some requests of you to go back to your council and, and ask for reciprocal show of, of good neighborly intent here. I can't vote for this amendment. I can't vote to undermine them. If you want to make it a million dollars, which is what's in the grant agreement, I would be willing to go along with that. But I think we really need to not, I mean, it's the one thing everyone hates about government, is one arm of government putting things up that throws an obstacle in front of another one, and then nothing happens. We shouldn't be a part of that. We live in these neighborhoods. I drive down Chatham Road all the time. My children have a list of four-letter words from driving down that stretch of Chatham Road. You know, we need to get this done. So if we make it a million, that keeps you in compliance with your grant, your grant proposal, we can open it up to come back. But realistically, we're basically telling you, you're going to have to come back here for another 400,000. Is anyone going to tell her, "No, we don't want to finish this job now that we've gotten the first million done"? I mean, could we just, as government, just say, "All right, get this done, get us our money back as soon as possible, and we'll throw that into another road as soon as we can"?
Make the motion, Alderman.
Are we done talking? Because my motion was for discussion.
You know, this is kind of like the tail wagging the dog. We've got a village of 1,400 people, and we've got a city of 100,000 plus. And we're being told, "Hey, we got to go along with Leland Grove because they already passed an ordinance." And I just got a, a problem with that. And if we could start all over again, I would, I, Mayor, in all honesty, I'd want to lend zero. But I think this is a good compromise at 800,000, because we, we did that, we went that route two years ago. You know, when you go through Leland Grove, there's no streetlights, even on Chatham Road, no streetlights. I think if, if you say you can't get the project done, you know, I think the solution is you go to a bank and you borrow money, you bond out some money. That's the way municipalities are supposed to do it. You know, you don't borrow from another municipality. We got our own responsibilities. So I say, "Let's pass that 800,000." And if you can't get that road done with 800,000 plus a million state grant, then either come back to us or your-
You're not understanding.
Or your, your taxpayers are going to say, "Hey, wait a minute. Maybe we don't need to exist as a municipality anymore." And that'd be a great-
Can I just say one thing? Alderman McMenamin, back in 2019, you are the one that agreed to-
That's correct. And, you know, I regret that now. I really do. I really regret signing on to what, the way I see this evolving, I really regret it.
Well.
Because now that 800,000 has become 1.4 million. But I did support the mayor's ordinance back, and it wasn't my ordinance. I supported it. I think our public works director put it together.
Well, you told me you did it, so.
No, I didn't say that. I said I co-sponsored it.
Alderman Donlin and then Alderman Redpath.
Mayor, what number is consistent with the application that was submitted to the state?
We said it was going to take 1.4 to do the road. That is what your engineers told us. They estimated the cost.
So, just, just a point of clarification, I want to be very clear here. So if the number is anything less than 1.4 million, is, does that put the grant in jeopardy?
No, no. The road, I mean, here's what it is.
Because it was an estimate.
That was an estimate. Okay?
Okay.
If it comes in at 1.2, we only need 1.2.
Right.
If it comes in at 1.5, we have to take care of the rest of it. So 1.4 is what it, we, they, when we talked to Nate and the different engineers, that they estimated it would cost. And when they put it out for bid, that's what it was going to be.
That was the low bid was 1.4.
Yes.
We have a copy of that.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm asking the question. I just, we've thrown a lot of numbers out. We're trying to negotiate here on the floor. I want to make sure we're clear on what direction we're heading and we need to head. Otherwise, you're going to be back again and again and again.
Right, right.
And nothing's going to get done.
I mean, and I will be honest with you. I'm willing to go back to our council and negotiate, you know, originally, we said eight years. I'd like to see us do it in less. I'd like to see us do it in four or five years, something like that. But again, that's something I have to go back to council and talk about. Is there a-
Alderman Redpath.
So the grant you applied for is for 1 million dollars?
Yes, sir.
So why don't we make a motion to, to change the ordinance to 1 million dollars to cover the grant? And then if they have to come back, they have to come back. I'm, I'm, look, this is a tough vote for me, because frankly, I don't want, I don't want to be the bank. I don't want to be the bank. And like you said, if you run into trouble, you need to go to the bank and, and take out a note for that. But, but look, we, it's important to get this thing rolling, and all four of you over there, this affects all four of your wards. So the bottom line is, is we need to get it rolling. So I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance to 1 million dollars.
Second. Second?
We, second.
Discussion.
We're kind of going out of order, though. This was for discussion.
This is on for discussion. I can move the-
There a motion to move this to debate?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of moving to debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
I'll re, I'll re, uh, go ahead.
Motion to, for, for passage and then amend.
Yep. So a motion for amendment.
The motion is to amend it to 1 million dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, amend to 1 million dollars and second it? Any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Will 1 million dollars be enough to cover the grant?
Well, to cover the grant, but it won't be enough to do the road. Because the road's 1.4.
I don't understand what that means to cover the grant. It's, a grant is free money.
No, it's not.
A grant is free money on 1 million dollars.
It's reimbursement.
It's a reimbursable grant. You have to pay first, and then you get your money. But you get your money, then we're going to pay you. It's, it's not, we don't get the money upfront.
Counselor, do you want to reward this, how we can work through it?
Reimburse-
All, Corporation Council's going to provide and suggest.
Just briefly, maybe this would be of some help. The, I think where the confusion is coming in is, what's the end loan? Because the entire project cost is 1.4 million, but do you anticipate a grant of a million or 800,000 or 700?
We anticipate a, a grant of 1 million dollars. And then we would basically be bar, we have to borrow the whole amount from you.
Well, that's, that's where the breakdown, I think, is. Because the, the, I'm assuming there'll be periodic payments, like monthly payments.
Yes.
So you would draw down, like any line of credit, for say, 200,000 for that month. You put the 200,000 to the, to the contractor, then you get the reimbursement, and that's paid back to the city. So you returned it to the 800. So you never run out of money.
Yeah.
It's like a revolving loan.
Right.
That's right.
But if we can only spend 800, and we spend 1.4-
But the, the grant is, you're repaying it as you go.
Right.
It's repayment, you don't-
I understand that, yeah.
So your 800 might stay 800 for most of the project. Because as you pay out, you get the money and you pay it back. And what I think where the confusion is, is what's the end loan? Because what you've said is, the end loan would be 400,000.
Right.
So what the city is-
After the grant's received.
After the grant is received.
The end loan.
Yes.
So by doubling it to 800, you're at, this is actually allowing you to maybe get a lesser, I mean, possibly, maybe it's only 600 grant. In which case, you're fine, because you're going to end up with a, where the city will end up with a final loan of 800,000 that you would be paying back. Because it's revolving. Does that make sense? In other words, you, you, you do a reimbursement, and you're going to make an immediate payment back.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, okay, so kind of my fuzzy math here. The way I look at it, if we loaned them 1.4, they got 200,000 in the bank, they start paying us on that until, and then they get their, their, their 1 million dollar grant, okay? As they're paying us back, technically, what we're loaning them that we don't have secured, that, you know, we're, we're assuming they're going to get a million dollar grant. What we don't have secured is 200,000. And that potentially could hold up that project. We're going to hold up a project for 200,000 of unsecured debt. And we know that, you know, so, so the way I look at it, you give them the full amount, they pay, they, they get reimbursed as they, as they pay the, they have to pay the bills. So you get it, and then at the end, what they're going to be stuck paying us, based on what we've given them, and their 200,000 in the bank, is 200, what, 300,000, no, 200,000. So, so that's what we're, that's what we're really talking about here. They need the money upfront so they can pay the bills, but they, at the end, they're, they're on the hook for 200,000.
The concern-
That's the way I see this.
Others expressed the concern, as long as the million dollars comes forward. I think that's the concern that council members have expressed.
Well, then it's 800,000 if it doesn't. I mean-
But like Corporation Council said, a million dollars would go forward. When you get your million dollars, you pay back what you can, and then it's a revolving fund for the remaining amount.
And the only, the only part that I'm, I think there is some confusion, maybe on everybody's part, is on the reimbursements. The reimbursements, I'm assuming, would be periodic, meaning monthly or quarterly or something. In other words, it wouldn't be a year from now or two years, and the project's done, it goes as the work is done.
Exactly.
So then you would immediately pay back the city, so you're keeping the loan amount in balance. Does that make sense? In other words, you, if you did 200,000 for the work, it, it's paid through that process, then you apply for reimbursement for 200, then you pay back the 200, so now you're back to the original amount. Then you just keep doing the same thing over and over.
I'm a little confused, but-
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll have to talk to our, I'm, I'm a little confused with that.
But I think if you want to just make a contingent on the grant, if you would like to do the one for contingent on grant, that's also-
Here's the problem with making a contingent on the grant. If you do that, or if we do that, work's not going to start till next year. I mean, it's going to, who knows when it will get done? I talked to, again, the contractor, if it progresses like it's going for the city side of Chatham Road, start the concrete work this fall and winter, then you can start the asphalt in spring, gets done by July.
Exactly.
Otherwise, you're looking at the end of the next year, I think, or whatever.
You're right.
So that's the, that's the catch and all this.
That's the catch-all with all of this. That's the catch-all.
So I think if we, I guess we'll take a vote on the million dollars and, unless there's other discussion with regards to that, and operating that like a revolving fund where they pay back when the, you know, as far as the grant comes forward and then the remaining amounts financed. Any questions on the million? All in favor of the amendment for a million dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
No.
Motion carries.
Did it? Could we have a rule call on that?
Sure.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Fugensi.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman De Senso, who's not here. Alderman McMenamin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Connolly.
No.
Alderman Donilon.
No.
Alderman Hanner.
No.
Okay, you have six ayes and three noes, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion passes. Any discussion on the ordinance as amended? Alderman McMenamin?
Do you want to review, Mayor, the amendments to the agreement?
Corporation Counsel?
The other, the other, these are purely contract items, we're just discussing. One of the concerns was to make sure that, and I think that has been answered in part with the discussion with the contractor, but that moving forward in this matter would not delay the work that's currently in process on Chatham Road. Meaning that the, that it wouldn't cause the, the contractor to have to divert resources in order to complete work already under contract because we're literally already started.
And the city's, it's supposed to be complete by mid-November.
I'm sorry, sir?
The city's work's supposed to be done by mid-November according to the contract.
Yeah, the city of Springfield portion of the Chatham Road is, is going to get priority and we get that done first before we divert resources and contractor assets to the Leland Grove portion.
And what was the other item? Was that the main?
I think that was it.
Was that the main? Okay. Though, that's really the primary, I mean substantive item relating just to the timing of the work so that it did not interrupt the current contract that literally is under, under operation. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance as amended passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is document number 2021-344. An ordinance amending chapter 100 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended to increase the hotel and motel tax by 1% from 7% to 8%. Chair Lentain, a motion placed, agenda number 2021-344, and final passage.
Still moved.
Sorry.
Been moved and seconded to do an ominous vote on the, all the ordinances associated with the Legacy Sports Complex. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is document number 2021-345. An ordinance authorizing a 2% hotel motel tax rebate for Legacy Park Sports LLC per the development agreement dated June 15, 2021, to develop a sports complex within the project area. And agenda number 2021-346. An ordinance authorizing a city property tax rebate for Legacy Park Sports LLC per the development agreement dated June 15, 2021, to develop a sports complex within the project area. And then the last one, I believe, is agenda number 2021-347. An ordinance authorizing a sales tax rebate agreement for Legacy Park Sports LLC per the development agreement dated June 15, 2021, to develop a sports complex within the project area. Discussion. Alderman Williams.
Yes, so, so these percentages apply to the whole city or the specific area?
The hotel motel is the whole city and then the sales tax is within the area. And there's property tax within that, to Corporation Counsel, and that's within the area.
Okay, so I, I just want to remind everybody that this developer did not agree that he could, could, you know, that his, that these things would be staying in Springfield. That these people that are coming to this tournament, he would not agree to that community benefits agreement. He would not agree that he's going to build the structures on the Springfield side of Shields, where our school district would benefit. He would not agree.
But he did.
And, and I, yeah, no, he did not want to accept it. I asked him when he stood up here, and those two things are important to me because that's what makes it citywide. All of us have students in school district 186. And as an ex-board member, I think you would really be backing that up to try to take care of the schools. But what we continually do in Springfield, similar to what we just did, is take care of other municipalities and other cities. If Chatham is going to benefit, because we won't sit up here and make them build on our side of where our school district is. Because if they build to the south, like Ingrain is already chattling, probably that hotel. We have to really be paying attention to where we build things or we end up with taking care of a private, I guess y'all calling it private public, and, and then they only benefiting in the surrounding areas. Because we weren't smart enough to make them be dedicated. I can't even get them to be, the over, the games, that overflow games or play-in games, use the existing facilities in Springfield. No, can't guarantee it, can't. This guy did not get pinned down to do anything for Springfield as far as I'm concerned, Mayor. He spent all his time telling us, I need this, I need this, I need all these amendments that you guys are passing. I'm for a sports complex, but heck, if we're going to do all this, build it and run it ourselves as a city. Or if he's a big boy, be the private big boy you are, then we ain't got nothing to say because he's using his own money to build for Chatham. Because that's all that's going to happen because right now that's all that has happened out there. You know, okay, he says, I'm putting the fields on, on the Chatham side. So I said, okay, then show me you're going to put the structure, if feasible. What is that? That's wiggle room. If feasible, I, I'll make sure they're on the south side, which would, that would be Springfield School District. I, I have concerns with what we're getting ready to do. We have to think about this. We, we talk especially over there in them four wards, they're pro Springfield a whole lot. But then when people, we want to annex them, the mayor wants to come on in, oh, they should have a choice. I chose, I mean, come on, we either for Springfield or we're the Springfield City Council. We're not Leland Grove, we're not Chatham, we're not nothingness. And all I'm saying is, some of these moves we're making with this sports complex, you guys need to think about and make them say they're going to build on the Springfield School District side and make them say they're going to stay in Springfield. I'm board three. If they never come and stay in none of my hotels, how is that citywide? I got to find a way to make this citywide to make sense for me to support it. Or the sport complex to be out there with the other people using it and running it at our expense though. Because now when you stay in our hotel, we just increased it 1%. That, you know, for them to stay in hotels in Springfield. Where's the benefit that's citywide? If anybody could just convince me of that, because the developer didn't agree to any of it.
Yeah, we'll ask Scott and all to come up and answer that. But my, my understanding of the project is the building itself would be on 186 side with the remainder of the fields. Some of them would be, but the way I look at it, what you'd want are any structures being built on 186 side.
Yes.
Because that's going to generate a greater property tax.
Mayor, real quick.
Yep. Oh, sorry. Alderman Hanner.
Quick, well, the question is, is, so if they have their office, if they have their office over on the, on the district side, that's where all the money's coming to. I guess if they had a snack bar, that would be the one thing that, if they had a snack bar on one end, and I would imagine they would have multiple, but, but the main one is when the money comes in, as long as that, the, the office where they're receiving the money would be on the district side, that would equate, right? Or I, I mean, I guess they can't.
Where it smelled into further registrations and all that. Corporation Counsel.
So what you're saying, as long as the address is Springfield?
To me, that, and that's what I'm asking.
Asking.
Alderman, I, I, I think that if.
Corporation Counsel?
Yeah, just, I think very briefly, you may recall that the, these, these are kind of the enabling ordinances from the original development agreement, you know, that was discussed. And the developer, I think, had mentioned that they have a tremendous incentive to maximizing the, for example, people staying in hotels within the city because it increases the amount of the tax dollars. They have a tremendous incentive to operate in such a way that they capture the sales tax. Because if they don't do that, they don't have an opportunity to seek reimbursement. So they.
But it's not in writing?
It's re, it is.
I, I know the incentives, the incentives in writing, I agree with you, sir.
But, but think about it for a minute. If they don't perform, they don't get the money. So that's the issue. If people don't, if they, if they are not able to generate the tax base that they're expecting to generate, then the city isn't out anything because we don't owe them anything. This agreement is a contingent on their performing by bringing in the tax. So this does not divert tax, if you will, sales tax or real estate tax from any other area of the city. It's all right there. And I think they have said that, at least I believe, I recall that they had said, and it was in some of their reports, that they minimally have to do about $65 million of total development for all of this to work the way it should work. So they have a huge incentive, if you will, using a profit idea to make it happen. Because if they allow people to be outside that area, they do not get the taxes.
So, so, so my fear is, okay, that's them. So now the city of Chatham comes and builds these little hotels up on I-72, which is just right across from where we're located. What prevents, if we don't make them do the play-in or make them do the guarantee that these tournaments are going to stay, they could be cheaper than our hotels or, and they're closer because the location, which is, was horrible. And so then all of a sudden, they're staying in those hotels and there's nothing the developer can do, nothing we can do because we've already done our part. And, and I'm telling you, it may not seem serious right now, but I, I just think this is how this is going to play out.
I think the developer's statement, at least during the discussion with the council, and I think privately it's been, that when they're going to do tournaments, they're going to make contracts with those entities requiring them to be in the city.
Well, that's what I asked in the community benefits agreement, sir.
But I'm saying however, they can't, they really can't force people per se, you know, where to stay. But keep in mind, if they don't stay there, then they don't get the benefit of the taxes.
It doesn't make sense to me, but I'll thank you anyway.
What Corporation Counsel's saying is if they, say Chatham does do that, that doesn't help the project.
Yeah, but the developer, they control Chatham.
They have to stay at the hotels within the city. Otherwise the bonds don't get paid and it's on the developer. So that's the incentive for them to make sure the development or the, the stays happen within the city boundaries. But Alderwoman Connolly, then we'll have Scott and all speak unless a council member wants to say something prior to. Alderwoman Connolly?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And Alderman Williams, I, I understand your point. I, I will tell you, having traveled to quite a few tournaments in my day, there's always an offer from the tournament of our preferred hotels directing you to places. And it may not be the one closest to the, to the site, but it's the one that has worked out a deal with, with the, with the tournament. And that's where the teams tend to go. I mean, no, we can't tell people where to stay, but we, this developer makes no, doesn't get our, our tax dollars back to him or the, the hotel motel. It's not even our, it's, I mean, if, if it's a tournament in Springfield, I'm not direct, I'm not staying in a hotel. Our residents don't have to stay in hotels. Out of town people come, they stay in these hotels. These, the, the, the tournaments themselves are going to have to be designed to attract people to our Springfield hotels so that they can get their money back. Because otherwise the site won't do well. But I do think Alderman Hanner raised a good point, and that was my understanding too, which I think goes to Alderman Williams' second point. My understanding, when we passed this, was that the, the address for the facility and then the resulting tax dollars generated from that, that address would be in Springfield 186 boundaries. That, that was, you're absolutely right, Alderman. That is critical to my support of this and I, I don't, I haven't heard that anything's changed from that. So Mayor, I know you, you kind of asked Corporation Counsel to sum up a bunch of things, but is that, can we just get clarification? Is that accurate?
Just very briefly, yes, I believe that's generally the case. The, the, the issue here again is the point of sale is the point of taxation. So they have a huge interest in, for example, Shields is in the city. They will be a primary beneficiary, sales at Shields. However, the sales tax, of course, is city sales tax and so on because of that location. Any of the places within the district, even for example, the Ingrain pays city sales tax. So even though if it's for a real estate tax purpose, I don't know exactly where that dividing line is for Chatham versus for real estate tax.
I looked it up, it's Chatham.
For sales tax, it's all in the city. Or any of the hotels and so on that are within the city boundaries.
So if they have their, their main billing address is located in the city of Springfield.
Then anything they sell would be taxed by the city.
So all of those, all those tournament fees? Right. All of those tournament fees will be in 186 boundaries, which are actually a little different from the city's boundaries.
Right.
Right, okay. Because that, thank you, because that is critical to my support of this.
Alderman Redpath and Scott and all, unless someone else wants to make.
Alderman Williams' point is well-taken. And that was when Alderman Turner was still here, that was part of our, our biggest argument is because those hotels on, on Dirksen Parkway and Stevenson Drive are very important to this project. They have to, there's got to be a way for them to tie this thing up because we need it on the east side where the Dirksen Parkway hotels, there's a lot of them. There's four, probably five or six of them over there that, that we have to have to make these things work. They can't put these people. I understand the, the point about Chatham people building up there, but like Alderman Connolly said, it's not to their benefit to do that because they, they direct people to our hotels. We need that sales tax in addition to, to what they're going to get on, where their office is going to be located. So that was, that was the point I argued when they were here and I felt confident for it or I wouldn't have voted for it.
Yeah, Scott can confirm it, but Steve Luker had said previously that the office as well as the complex, the indoor sports complex will be on school district 186 side or in the boundaries.
He has said that several times. The developer has made, to that point, that the, that the main buildings will be on the district 186 side. So, I mean, the developer could certainly, you know, confirm that, but I know he's said that many times. And then to the point, with the hotels themselves is exactly, the state of play will be citywide, which is different. It won't be just a few hotels. So those hotels on Dirksen Parkway will see the action of the sports complex, but that 2% going back into the complex is big. So the state of play will happen citywide. Chatham building on their side is highly unlikely. That sports complex isn't going to sustain just a hotel on Chatham's side. If any hotels are going to come after the sports complex, it's likely going to be on the Springfield side or on that Legacy Point side. I cannot see, 30 years in industry, seeing Chatham build hotels.
Just to follow up on, on, on that, Mayor, if I'm right. The, the point is, is that Alderman Williams is, is fighting for not only just the hotels. Because if you draw that people there, that, that Capital City Shopping Center is a ghost town. And we need, we need to drive, we need to drive business over there. And the way we do that is put people in those hotels.
And that's what 65,000 room nights will do. Adding new room nights added to a market.
Alderman Hanner?
And I, my question is, that whole part, how they, how they design everything still has to come back to us, right?
Right. We can put in the agreement that the indoor facility be over there. Right.
Alderman Williams, we, I think that's when we use our leverage to say, look, this is where it's got to be. You know, where the, the office we got, that's when we make sure that it's, it's where we want it to be. And, you know, they, I think that's where, you know, this is all preliminary. And they still have to raise the funds to, to, their, their portion of the funds, which I don't know how that's going or whatever. This is all preliminary. Now, the other question that I have is if they do not raise the funds, do we roll, can we roll this back? Or is it, is it reciprocal to roll, roll it back or do we have to bring it in front of the council to roll it back?
Corporation Counsel?
Yeah, just very briefly, the, excuse me, the, all of the agreements are subject to the requirements of the development agreement. So absent performance, there would be no funds.
Okay, thank you.
And if you could speak to the point about assuring that the facilities are within 186 boundaries?
Well, the.
Using the agreement.
Yeah, the, in other words, you may recall that what Alderman Hanner is correct, who was saying, was that they still have to produce several things for the city. One is the design, they haven't done that, you know, formal design, they've got some concepts. They also have to provide to us a economic feasibility study, basically that, you know, it's something in relation to how the financing is going to be. And then what the final plan is, actual operating plans, in order to maintain it for the 20-year cycle of the, all of this. And ultimately, all of that process will end up back here for some kind of discussion. And the interesting part is that the financing of this, the private financing, the, you know, the banks or the bond people are going to require them to design it in a way to maximize the tax dollars because that's how they're going to repay the loans. So they're going to require them to come up with a process that's going to maximize the amount of taxes that are recoverable for reimbursement.
Alderman Williams?
So Scott, I'm, I'm in Director Dow. The economic feasibility study, when is that normally done? I, I feel like we're doing everything first and then they got tons of stuff they got to do. But I was under the impression the economic feasibility study was done.
Yeah, that was part of the projection they did in phase two. So the 65,000 room nights annually, the $25 million, you know, new economic impact annually was done in phase two. Unless there's a supplemental that's included in the developer's agreement.
That's correct.
There, there's going to be because the bank, you know, financing people are very serious. They're going to require a very in-depth analysis to make sure that the project is viable to get financing. That's what I was referring to. They, and they have to provide that to us. It's like a, it's like the final step.
I think these are just the companion ordinances to the developer's agreement that gets the developers to their part. That's really where we're at.
They are, the development agreement required the city council to adopt these items within so much period of time. However, each of these is contingent on them performing.
So what, what's the developer agreement on their timeline for, for their things to come in to us? Like the actual plan, the actual economic study, you know, and things like that. When do they do their part? Is that a timeline or is it just open-ended?
No, no, it, it's, I'll check for sure, but my memory is it was 270 days from the date of, from the date of signing, which had been in June, that they have to come back and they have a one-time right to extend it by 60 days is my memory. So, but I'll get those timelines, but it's spelled out in the agreement.
Okay.
Exactly. So they're supposed to be starting the outdoor phase by next spring. And they felt they could do that, so they're on a fast track trying to get the preliminary or phase one financing in place. But they still have to come back to the council with a plan.
Thank you.
They have to get investors and raise the financing. That's why these ordinances, you can't do one without the other. And so there'll be projections, performers that they have to supply the bank and then the bank's going to approve the, the project based on its, the foundational structure that they have with regards to investors, what they're putting in and the financing that the bank's willing to put in, in association with these ordinances.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman McMenamin?
Yeah, I think the sports complex is a great idea, but I'm a no vote tonight, like I was for the developer's agreement for the same reasons. We've got a, a massive subsidy, I think it's about $30 million over 20.
I think the sports complex is a great idea, but I'm a no vote tonight, like I was for the developers' agreement, for the same reasons. We've got a massive subsidy, I think it's about $30 million over 20 years, going to a private entity for private gain, and I think the subsidy is too great. We're putting too many tax eggs in the same basket. We're going to give 25% of our hotel motel tax to a single project. I think it's just too much subsidy and too many tax breaks, so that's, but I respect, Scott Dow, all the effort you've put into the legacy sports, and I just wish we could have done it without the massive subsidy and the tax breaks.
Anything else? Any other discussion? All in favor of the ordinance, or the series of ordinances, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, six voting yes, three voting no. Next item on the agenda is, catch my place here, sorry. Agenda number 2021-351, no ordinance supporting Michael A. Hurwitz to the Springfield Economic Development Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2021-351 on final passage.
Move second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes and none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-352, no ordinance approving the appointment of Samantha Gaddy to the Civil Service Commission. Chair will entertain a motion placing Agenda number 2021-352 on final passage.
So move?
Move in second, any discussion?
Discussion, Mayor.
Yep, Alderman McMinim.
I believe the nominee can't be here tonight. I think she's barely, or about to have a child, so that's understandable why she can't be here tonight. I do want to make a comment, though, about, to the nominee. I hope you go and read the section of our code regarding the Civil Service Commission. This is a paid commissioner. They're paid to do their jobs. I think it was two years ago, we had a nominee come in here, and I said, are you aware that you got to prepare an annual report to the city council, Civil Service Commission? And we got some equivocation, and yeah, we'll get you an annual report. We've never gotten an annual report. I haven't seen an annual report in 10 years, and these commissions are paid. They got to get those annual reports in. Not everyone around here is going to read it, but, you know, we get annual report, or we get more frequent monthly reports from the liquor commission. We get reports from lots of commissions. We get reports from the C W L P. We get, the Arborists came in and gave their report. And I think that type of information is helpful to any alderman that wants to sit around here, and they want to focus on a particular issue, they can go look at those annual reports and become informed. So Ms. Alcorn, could you make sure that the nominee knows that we expect an annual report? She's not going to be the chairman, but I hope the word gets back to the chairman of the Civil Service Commission. I haven't seen a report in 10 years, and it's in our city code. We shall get an annual report every year. We want to know what you're doing out there, and a lot of important HR, human resources type matters pass through the Civil Service Commission, union grievance disputes and all kinds of things. We need to see that in a report once a year. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, we're working towards all the commissions and committees to provide an annual report. So thank you. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, Mayor, was this last week we had, or I think it was last week, we had an issue where we had a person that had to be one of each party, and was, this wasn't the same one, right? Did we hold that, or I can't remember?
Just real briefly, the question--
It's the same one?
And I think the question, we did have a chance to, there was a discussion at the committee of the structure. There are seven members, they are paid. This is the city, the city Civil Service Commission, the city adopted Division One of the state Civil Service Commission law, and it has provisions in there that relate to party affiliation, where no party can have more than four out of the seven. So you have, that was the question, was the issue about party affiliation. And so that's the reason why party affiliation is required, because of the limitation that there can never be more than four of any one party.
And what does this do to the commission?
I thought there was an issue. No, I think that, I think the question was, this particular person was, I think, I believe independent or indicated independent. I'm trying to recall, but it was within the parameters, and the question came up of, is there a party affiliation discussion? The answer is yes, this is one of the very few where that actually exists.
But I think she leans to the right. That helps.
No, it doesn't. No. It don't help.
I'll ask Kathleen Alcorn can come up and speak to the character of the individual.
Well, it's not that, it's a rule. If we have a rule that--
If she's voted--
We've got to follow the rules here.
Well, if you vote a Republican and then you didn't vote in the other elections, what's that make you? Or what if you vote a Republican and, or Democrat, then you vote a Republican, what's that make you?
So does it spell out Republican or Democrat? What is it?
Yeah.
The civil--
State law. Go ahead, Corporates Council.
I apologize, I was simply going to say that this is historic, goes back many, many, many decades, and it's simply a prohibition for any civil service board throughout the state, all municipalities, that no party can have more than a majority, meaning in this case, there are seven members. The city adopted Division One of the civil service law of providing for seven members, maybe 70 or 80 years ago. And so this actually predates the 1970 Constitution, and so that we have seven members. However, the state law and our city code, consistent with the state law, says there cannot be more than four of those of the same party on the commission. And that was the reason that the issue came up, I think, about asking about party affiliation.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. So could someone please answer what our current makeup is for this commission? Without this appointment, what are we currently sitting at?
I think there's a, I believe there's a report here. I believe that there are, according to the information, I think that has been provided is there are four Democrats, one Republican, and it doesn't indicate what the chairperson is.
He's a Republican?
Republican, okay. So four who are associated with the Democratic Party, two that are associated with the Republican Party. So there's one vacancy.
They said that she was independent last week.
I mean--
Did they confirm?
In all fairness--
I make the motion, we hold this.
Second.
The move in second, to hold? Any discussion?
Yeah, what are we holding it for?
I want to ensure that we have a Republican candidate in there.
I guess I'd ask Kathleen Alcorn to come forward. Because two things, one, I received this name, we reached out to, I don't think you'll mind, Sarah Jimenez, and asked for recommendation, and these were one of the names, but Kathleen Alcorn's worked with her, I believe, in the past, and who was that under?
Governor Bruce Rauner.
Okay, so I don't know what that makes you. I just think it's, you know, she had great qualifications, and that's where it replaces Kathleen Alcorn, so, but it's, you know, the will of the council.
Mr. Mayor, we don't want to be embarrassed here, don't we just look at the most recent voting record for the most recent partisan primary and see how the person voted? Isn't that what we're supposed to do?
It is my understanding that that is, would be the typical process, if a person has declared their party affiliation by voting in the primary.
I just, we should be in compliance with state law.
So if we haven't done that, we need to do it, so we need to hold it if we haven't done it.
If you'd like to--
Sure. So my understanding of the state law is that the commission cannot have more than four members of one party. So we currently have four members of one party, so we are being compliant with the law.
I think we're asking, if she, if the woman we're talking about voted in the Democrat primary the last time--
She did not, I looked it up.
So we want to get a factual answer on that.
Yes, I actually pulled the voting record. She did not vote in the primary.
What about the last primary that she voted on? Do we know what--
She doesn't clear either party.
How did she vote in the last primary she voted in?
You know what, I don't have that answer.
We'll check it out.
Call them, Betty.
So there's been a motion to hold, and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is number 2021-359, no ordinance authorizing a contract with Sundown One to replace existing monitors in the city of Springfield's council chambers. AMD adding an additional monitor in the chamber hall for an amount not to exceed $27,905.33 for emergency. Pass, Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2021-359 on final passage.
So move second.
The move in second, any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Clerk, can you tell us what this does for us? What does this do?
This is going to get four new monitors in here. It's going to increase the size of these two back here and the two in the front.
So we're not talking about our monitors here on--
No, 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 we're talking about what the public sees. And it's going to bring all the wiring up to standard so that it's all matching. We kind of have a hodgepodge out there, that's where we lose some of the signal, and it slows things down, so all the wiring will be new. It'll have surge protectors that are not there now, so that if there's a lightning strike or inclement weather, it's now going to knock our signal out. The signals are going to be able to communicate with one another.
So, Mr. Clerk, I'm for this ordinance, but I just say, our problem is mostly technology. We are so far behind everybody else. When are we going to get there?
That's coming.
Let me finish, let me finish, please. We need to know, we need to have the ability to view presentations on our screen, we need to be able to have the ability to request to vote, we need to be doing a lot more stuff on here that we're not doing. And that's important, it's real important, because they do it down the street here, that big building with the big cone on top, they do it down there, they do it over here at the county. We got to get into the 20th century. We're way behind, our technology's terrible. So please, start that process.
That's coming, that process is already, are in the process, we're in the testing part of it right now. You're going to have the ability to, when you want to speak, rather than raising your hand, you're going to be able to do on your monitor, and the mayor's going to be able to see who has requested first, second, third.
He can't shut us off, though, can he?
He can't.
I'm sure he'd like to try.
How much for that one?
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that answer.
Yeah, and that should be about October 1st, when we'll be able to demonstrate it to the council, and we'll ask everybody to come in for a training session so that you know what the capabilities are. So we'll have new systems there, we will have new computer systems that run all of this also. So rather than kind of being in a Dr. Seuss's Whoville, where we have added this and added this and added this, everything is going to be working with one another.
There's going to be no big ghost voice coming out when we're in the middle of a heated debate either, right?
That's what we're working toward not happening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Any other discussion? All in favor, vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, number 2021-377, resolution fixing a time and place for a public hearing on amending the boundaries of the S H A Madison Park Place Tax Increment Finance Redevelopment Area to add an area generally bounded by North Grand Avenue on the north, 10th Street on the west, Reynolds Street on the south, and 19th Street on the east for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with rules in place on first reading, number 2021--
Now, that one, I think we needed to work some more on--
Okay, okay. Well, I guess we'll go straight to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business coming before the city council? Any new business coming before the city council?
Mayor?
Alderman Purchase, then Alderman Conley.
Thank you.
I believe that Alderman Donilon has a 25-year anniversary. I wanted to say happy anniversary. He didn't know I was going to say that tonight. Surprise! And again, thank you all for having the faith in me to sit up here on city council, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
He thought he was getting out here early.
No other place I'd rather spend it than right here.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say, I hope that Alderman Donilon's wife was not listening to the last half of that. No, but just real quick, we got a flyer in our mailboxes, and I just want to point out to everyone, the citizens, the Springfield Police Department is reopening their Citizens' Police Academy this year. I did this two years ago. It's an excellent experience. I would encourage my council members to take the time, it is well worth your effort. They are, when I put my reading glasses on, I can see, they are asking that this be limited to people who can prove that they have received a vaccine, so that they're vaccinated before going into this. But it's a great experience, you learn a whole lot about what our police department does, and get to see some really impressive training and officers at work. So strongly encourage people, citizens, I would encourage you to apply for this, it's a great experience. And that'll be Wednesday nights, 6 to 9.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Donilon?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I had a conversation recently with Corporation Counsel about something that all of, a lot of you ask me about periodically, and it's been a really thorn in my side, and that is Old Town Apartments located at the corner of Jefferson and Brunson Lane, significant problems, doesn't look good, the insides, you know, a lot of problems. And Corporation Counsel, just because I think you'll do a very succinct job on just kind of giving everybody an update on where that is, and the monthly updates that are being required, and what we hope to get out of this as soon as possible.
The, you may recall that this has, this is a fairly large apartment complex, it has had a series of owners, it's gone through bankruptcy, so on. The current owner is in the process of basically remodeling and trying to make the property both presentable and livable and also profitable, you know, for the developer. They have been, through the administrative court process, filing reports monthly, we've been asking they come to court to give updates. The preliminary schedule that they presented, they're far outside of that now, but primarily related to the inability to get, to be able to get contracts, subcontractors, and so on in a timely way, just because of the circumstances with the demands on everybody's time. So we are requiring them to both give monthly updates to the court, also, they've provided us with a new schedule, which we will be trying to hold them accountable for, but they have been struggling with, according to the information they've been providing to the administrative court, with both identifying and being able to hire proper construction assistance, and being able to get materials, simply because the costs have been so high. However, that being said, they have indicated that they've set aside several million dollars for the work, and they do expect the work to be done by next year. And it is a large undertaking, just by way of the, just the large number of apartments.
Jim, I appreciate that update, and I appreciate your help and involvement, and you've taken it seriously, but I think you and I agreed on the phone the other day, that we're, and the mayor, I'm sure, as well, and others in this room, that enough's enough, let's get it done, and let's get it done as soon as possible. Excuses aren't going to cut it this time, and I appreciate your due diligence and your department's due diligence on ensuring that it happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other new business? We do have someone signed up to speak, John Pruitt. John Pruitt here? If you'd like to state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yep, right there. Thank you.
Like I said, my name is John Pruitt. First of all, I live at 56 Carolyn Court, it's on the, it's out of Springfield, Ward Nine. Anyway, I want to say, it's first of all, it's a pleasure to speak before you all and the people of Springfield. I'm a new citizen of this area, so I was really, really excited about being here, just came down here for work, we decided we kind of really like it. The whole, I know I got a short time, so I'm going to try to wrap this up. The whole, I know I got a short time, so I'm going to try to wrap this up. I was very excited about it, because I talked to a guy named Scott, okay? He's, he's at the front, he's a security guard. So we were having a conversation, I wanted to talk about two different issues, we were having a conversation, and as I was approaching the building, I was like, okay, I need to get a mask, I'm sure they got a mask going in here. He's like, you got to get a mask. I was like, okay. Do you have a mask for me? He's like, no, we don't have the mask. We kind of got into a discussion, of course, after I went, I went to the truck and got a mask, came back. We had a discussion about, about why there weren't masks provided. And so it came down to, I don't know if it's right or not, and the things I'm discussing is just personal opinion, so feel free to correct me where it needs to be. But he said it was more about cost and finance, and this, that, and the other. And, and the one thing that I was really caught by that, is I said, well, it's odd coming here to the city hall, where Walmart's standard is, they have it at the door, you see what I'm saying? So I was just caught, because Walmart's standard is above the city hall. Because in my mind, the idea is, what is it? Getting people to comply is a lot harder these days. So the ones that actually want to comply, the relationship between the establishment and that person is like, now I can't come in, or, or something like, you know, and I've, and it's not just been me, it's, I've seen other people, but I think about, the guy brought up on that serious point, he was like, you know, we've been going through this for quite a long time, you ought to be able to afford to do that. Well, not, every situation.
Sorry to interrupt, but there should be masks down there. We have an abundant masks, so we'll make sure they're down there tomorrow.
That, that's awesome, that's awesome, because that's one thing I wanted to, see if we could talk about that, to make sure that these businesses are, the one reason that they're turning away people is because of masks. Let them have a mask, that way, if they want to, because compliance is the hardest part, to me, in my personal opinion. But with that being said, I appreciate that, that was, that went a lot easier than I thought it would. The second thing I wanted to talk about, was not necessarily something that really could be addressed at this moment, but it's just an idea that I had working in my mind. Okay, so, you know, let me just paint a scenario, okay? So we know about, like, when you go through a drive-through, say for instance McDonald's, and then you pay for the person's order behind you, right? You've all heard of that, right? It's called pay, pay it forward, that's right. It's called pay it forward, right? So, and I, I've talked about this everywhere I go, I try to talk, especially when I go through drive-throughs and stuff like that. The idea to me, is the person that is behind you is in line, because they can afford to pay whatever it is that they're ordering. The person at your window is the audience. The only person that sees you doing that goodwill, is the person that's working, trying to make that dollar, that the person behind you has already shown you they can afford, right? So if you're necessarily going to pay it forward, you're going to look at that worker and say, thank you for doing a wonderful job, here's me paying it forward to you. There is no audience, there is no one to pat you on the back, that's just you doing a good deed, versus you doing it for somebody that can already afford. Because that guy, you don't know his financial situation, but what you do know, is that he can't afford it, because he's in line, right? So my thing is, and then, and then I talk about, and I'm going to make this quick, I'm sorry about this, guys. But when we go to different stores, and they have like a bucket right there, right, and where you can donate, and then they have this thing called Roundup, where it allows you to donate to different charities. Well, what I was proposing, is instead of that, because to me, that sends the wrong message also. It's like, you come into our business, you spend your good hard-earned money, and we want you to dig a little deeper into your pockets, show us how good you are, and donate for a worthy cause. Now, the problem with that is a lot of people want to donate, but can't afford to donate. What about those people, right? How can they contribute? And my idea is, if those business establishments, maybe, really, if we could start out with like private owners and small businesses, if they could have some kind of kickback to say, hey, every person that comes into our establishment, every time we do a transaction, a small portion, even if it's a tenth of a penny, goes towards this. And they could say, no matter, no matter who you are, no matter what you make, no matter what you do, just you coming into our establishment shows that you care about such and such organization, or whatever. And then they feel like, as a person, I'm doing my part just by continuing to shop here. And they will be more likely to continue their business, as long as they know that they're doing something for them, by buying, or the service are good, and doing something for someone else. But, and also not costing them an extra dime at all. And then, to me, that's really the city building itself up altogether, all at once. Now, I know that's not going to be an easy task, but I would love to see something like that be talked about. If it can't be done, I can understand that, but I would rather say something and fail, than not say anything at all. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, John.
I wanted to say that.
Alderman Purchase.
There are some masks downstairs, because my mom forgot hers in the car, so we asked the security, and he gave her one tonight, before she came up.
Well, after trainer.
Speaking from personal experience, I mean, because he did turn, Scott's a good guy.
Yeah, no, we'll just have to make sure everybody knows where they can get them. Anybody else wish to address the council? If you'd like to come forward and state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Hilda Reyes, and I've been dealing with an issue where I live for two and a half years. Now, it's funny how one landlord can get away with everything, and one, the other one can't get away with nothing, okay? I've been in the same situation for two and a half years, like I said, and nothing's been done. Both landlords are informed, and lately, the city has cited one of the landlords, while the other one does god knows what with his money. Okay, I was brought up under the understanding that they would fix my apartment as we go. Okay? Well, apparently, they're in a messy divorce, okay? And I'm really sick of that issue. I can't get up and move, because I don't have the finances. And I'm just recently getting back to work, because I was diagnosed with COVID-19. Okay? So what is the solution to this? You're, you're arguing over Chatham Road, okay? The west side is the west side, it's up cat. What about the east side? I live on the east side, you know? We have abandoned buildings, houses, property that needs maintenance too, that has not been attended to. Although, that the management has been satisfied, still no movement. Okay? And this is, this has got to come to an end somewhere. And George William Gregory, wait, George Courtney Williams, okay? Every time he comes onto my property, he calls conflict with me. I'm a bad name, I'm this, I'm that. But when I go and call the sheriff department, he flees, okay? But an ordinary person, we get a warrant or get papers sent to us by the courts, they're immediately locating us, why can't they find George, George Williams? Why can't they?
Yeah, Juan Wurts is in the back, and he can help with assistance with regards to.
I've been going through public relations.
Uh huh.
Okay, I, I'm at the woods end, okay? There's a black mold underneath my sink in the kitchen. That's how bad it's getting.
Yeah, so you'll have to either work with Juan or Public Health Department.
I've been working with both.
Okay.
So, I, I brought this up to the last time when I came up here to speak with you. But you weren't informed of one of the elder people on your, you just hired, okay? It's uncalled for, okay? I'm, I'm a person too, I deserve to live as well as she does, and as well as Courtney does, okay?
And so, get Juan, he'll get your information and move forward if he needs to attack the police, or whatever, or take whatever.
He's already informed of it.
Okay.
Mayor, we, we talked to Hilda, and we've been helping her. One of my staff members sent the pictures to Public Works, so we've, we've been trying to help her. I believe some of the items went to the legal department, but we have help in everything we can.
Have you guys tried to use some bleach on that, on that mold?
I've tried to, I would.
Okay, all right.
And I haven't brought it up to, to.
Well, you might, you might be able to, if you could, there should be some resources for moving, or what have you, but check with Capitol Township or Community Resources through the county, okay?
Okay, well, the end of the situation, the, the solution is to move, right? But the problem still exists.
Well, that's what, the one way.
If I'm out of there, there's going to be another family there, okay? They're going to move another family there. The problem still exists. Why can't you, as mayor, or else council, you know, put the fire under these landlord's sails, and get things done? The city can only do so much, they can just fine them, they'll just pay it.
We can do inspections, and Corporation Council would be glad to cover that after this council meeting, but there's protocol with regards to that. Everybody has rights, you've even said that. So what's going to happen is, if you find a new place, or in your current condition, Juan Wurts will work with Building and Zoning to inspect the property. Public Health, which is the county, should inspect the property, so they're supposed to carry out their diligence. Public Health is the county, that's not us, but we'll follow up and see what we can do to the fullest extent, and go from there. But Juan is the person that can help you find resources, if you need resources to help move, or whatever the case may be. Plus, he'll use other departments to remedy this situation as best as we can.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Alderman Gregory.
And, and, you know, Ms. Hilda's been here before, and, and we've, we've talked, and, 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 you know, I usually stay quiet, because I, you know, I don't want conflict. But I will say that, you know, we, we have done everything that we can to really rectify and bring some stability to this situation. It is a very complex situation that we have been working on. The, the furniture that was outside has been removed, it was removed the next day, Mr. Harris did a fantastic job. I'll take it upon myself, if I miss, to report that to him. But anytime that I send stuff to Public Works, they get on it immediately. We was just there at Mary Bryant Home, and they had an issue with the sidewalk, Public Works was there the next day. We are very, very responsible, we have been on top of blighted in properties. This property that is in question is, is the furthest property, one of the furthest properties from my mind. It is nowhere in, in the condition that many, 80% of these properties that, that we are dealing with in. We definitely want to quick, fix as quick as possible, but, but, you know, I, I just get taken back sometimes, when we come up here, we get attacked by, by constituents who we are trying to help day in and day out. I probably shouldn't even be speaking to the lady, she, you know, threatened me when we had this police thing going on. So, but yet and still, I remain professional, and I help her. So, so, you know, when, when people come up here, they can be respectful and, and things, but, you know, we're, we're going to do everything we can to keep our citizens safe. So we'll, we'll stay on this, and we'll get it fixed as soon as possible. So thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council? Is there a motion for a German?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor, say aye. We're German, thank you.